Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup of Hudsonville. I'd like to call to order the regular session dated September 14th, 7:00 PM. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Larrar?
Here.
Brad Rank?
Here.
Staggenga?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here, thank you. Now, we'd like to have a moment of silence. I believe Commissioner Larry Branson will be...
Give us a prayer. Sure, pray. Father, we thank you, and we come to you, and we thank you for the bounty and provisions that you provide for us. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this country. I pray that you will continue to protect our officers, our firefighters, and our safety personnel, keep them safe, and pray for our staff as they continue to work to make this city a great place to live and improve our quality of life. Pray that you will give us wisdom and understanding in the topics that we discuss this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Larry. Now is the time for public comments. I'd first like to recognize our newest city employee, Andrea Rabenow, the RHR Administrator. You've been with us now, what, two weeks?
This is week three.
This is week three. Well, thank you, Andrea, and please approach the dais, and you can maybe introduce yourself to the team.
Yeah, so I've met a couple of you before, but my name is Andrea Rabenow. I've had quite a bit of experience in HR, private sector, but this is my first public-sector HR position, so I'm excited to learn and grow, as well as bring in some new systems and maybe review some policies and stuff for the city, so.
Andrea, you're also the Assistant City Clerk, so I understand you've been busy studying how to hold an election?
Yeah.
And you're not in California tonight.
Jill's keeping me a little bit busy. That's okay, though. I'm excited to kind of learn how that process goes, too. So, happy to be here. Thank you, officer.
Any questions or discussion from the Commissioners for Andrea?
Welcome.
Welcome, and I had the opportunity to be part of the interview team, and I enjoyed doing that. You did a fantastic job on that as well, so, welcome.
Thank you.
And I'll just say Andrea's jumped in hitting the ground running. We had a new hire right immediately when she started, and she was instrumental in kind of helping us through finding better ways to do that process and the whole interview process and the science of that. She was very helpful in that, so I think just very, very invaluable to the organization getting our HR. Our HR department was always good, but there was a lot of room for improvement, and Andrea's going to bring a lot of knowledge and skill sets to the table that are going to help us get there, so we're really pleased to have you. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. We have one other person here from the public that chooses to address the Commission from the Ottawa County United Way. Patrick of United Way, please approach us and give us your commentary.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me in tonight. It's a real pleasure. Would you be my clicker? That's awesome. I used to carry around this laser pointer, but it doesn't work on TV.
Doesn't work on the TVs.
My name is Patrick Moran from United Way. I've got to commend you, Patrick. This is a full table today, and I speak at a lot of councils and commissions, and it's usually a lot of empty chairs, so congratulations on getting everybody out, especially on September night. So, we're going to talk data today because I know you all love data. It's my passion, I'm a data geek, and at United Way we do two major Ottawa County reports. One is the Community Assessment that you may have seen, hopefully you've read it cover to cover, and the other one is every two years we do an ALIS report, and I'm here to talk to you about the brand-new ALIS report, if you could click on it. First of all, who's heard of ALIS? Oh, yes, I love it. ALIS is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed. The group that prior to the ALIS acronym, we called the Working Poor. People who are working in our community, doing important jobs, but unable to make ends meet. There was more month than there was money. Can we go to the next one? Thank you. ALIS started in Rutgers University's United Way, which was, I believe, New Jersey, I think that is maybe, something like that, and they said, "We need something that's better than the poverty level to report data on." The poverty level was created in the '60s. It was based on trying to find an average between Hudsonville City and Manhattan and New Orleans and Feriesburg, and it's not a great average when you try to find one number that fits those things. So, what they did, very intelligently and unfortunately very expensively, data is expensive, they went into each municipality and figured out, "What does it cost a single person to live there? What does it cost a double-income, no kids? What does it cost a family of five? What's it cost a single mother?" They looked at daycare-proof municipality housing, and then they compared it with the wage, which is a much better way to determine who's struggling, who's likely to struggle than the poverty level. Next slide. You can see from that slide there that we've gone to about 30 states in the U.S. that have their own ALIS report. This is what the ALIS report can do for a community. Figure out who's struggling, determine where they're most likely to be living by municipality and ZIP code, identify barriers to them achieving what we call the ALIS threshold. The ALIS threshold is what you might call the livable wage. Based on my family type and what municipality I live in, this is what I need to earn. And then it helps us as a United Way in a system of nonprofits, figure out how do we either remove those barriers or navigate around them. What we found is it's really hard to remove those barriers. Navigating around them is a little easier. Next slide, please. So, the darker the color on this slide, the more ALIS, remember, more ALIS means more people who are struggling to make ends meet. You'll notice that the pretty color that is Ottawa County and some of our surrounding counties is pretty light compared to other parts. So, we are ahead of the curve in Michigan. We have less ALIS families and less ALIS individuals in Michigan than we do elsewhere in Ottawa than we do elsewhere in Michigan. Michigan is about in the middle of the nation so far, so we're kind of the best of a middling group. We're going to go Michigan, we're going to go Ottawa County, and then we're going to go Hudsonville. We're going to get down into some data, but I wanted two hours and I got given 10 minutes, so we're going to go real summary. Next slide, please. People have asked me, "But why does it matter? Don't we have support for those families?" And the truth of the matter is, is we have support for our poverty-level families, that 9% to 11% of poverty, lots of support, but the gap between poverty and ALIS, the help drops off, bit by bit, by bit, one by one, the help drops off, and you can earn more money and actually be further away from financial stability than you were when you lived in poverty until you crest a certain dollar amount. The reason that's important is about 60% of the jobs in what we call nurturers and maintainers, the people that keep our community running, earn below $20 an hour, and a big percentage of those are below the poverty line, below the ALIS threshold. So, when we're talking about what keeps our community running, a lot of those people are struggling. Next slide. Here's another problem that we found by doing this ALIS report now. This is the third iteration of it in Ottawa County and in Michigan. We created ALIS to kind of combat the words of the poverty level. We said, "What do we really need to do?" And we created the ALIS Essentials Index to combat the Consumer Price Index. Up until this year, we've had a very low inflation environment. In fact, probably the last time we had serious inflation was when I first came to West Michigan 20-some years ago. We're in a new inflationary period, but what the ALIS Essentials Index does is it says, "Only look at inflation in the things everybody has to buy: bread, milk, daycare, housing, gas." Only look at those things. Don't compare it to everything in the CPI. And when you look at it, as you can see there, when you look at just the ALIS Essentials Index, it's rising at twice the speed of the Consumer Price Index. So, if what you're buying are just the basics, you're going to be struggling math over time. Next slide, please. So, in Ottawa County, we have been decreasing the percentage of ALIS in our community for nine years now. Very, very exciting for us. We did a regression on the first study that went back three years, so we have nine years with true data, and we're down to 30% in the county. The only problem with that is the fastest-growing county in Michigan, and the actual number of people we have today under the ALIS threshold is the biggest it's ever been. So, if I want to look really good, I say, "Look, our ALIS has dropped to 30%." If I want to tell the truth, I say, "We've never had more households in ALIS than we do today." Next slide. So, here's the good news. We're beating, and I say "Aligan" because we actually run the Ottawa and the Aligan County Report, we're beating Michigan, we're beating a lot of places in the country that are our peers. We're doing better. Jobs are recovering from the COVID spike. Whatever the reason that people didn't go back to work is for somebody else to figure out, but we're recovering from that. Wages are growing, and the stimulus money helped more than you can imagine. It helped families, it helped nonprofits, it helped businesses. We're doing better than a lot of people. Click again, please. But here's the problem. With that increased population, we've got more than ever before. 10% of the people are on what we call the ALIS cusp. Inflation will push them into ALIS if it goes above 1% to 2%, and it's rising twice as fast as the CPI. One more click for that. And these metrics were calculated on data from about two months before the pandemic. Pre-inflation, pre-pandemic, pre-increase in a lot of those prices. So, we believe right now that we're about 10 points worse off than the current data shows, and we're actually going to wait until the COVID, if it's ever over, until some of that data comes back because it's an enormous blip, and we want it to be a trend. So, we're going to wait to do the next report a little bit. Next slide, please. So, let's get down to Hudsonville. We can do it by census code, we can do it by municipality, we can do it by census tract, and we can do it by ZIP code, but if you just look at the census designation of Hudsonville, you're at about 34% below the ALIS threshold. So, what you actually have is a lower percentage of people below poverty line than most communities, but about the same amount of people who are struggling to make ends meet, and that's based on the cost of living in town against the wages in town. Next slide, please. But averages don't tell the whole story, so we love to disaggregate the data and look a little bit deeper. So, if you look at the total ALIS population in the county at 30% and compare it to the Hispanic and black population in the county, you can see significant differences, that we still have a lot of disparity. We are still churning through this new data to be able to give you this on a Hudsonville level. Takes a long time to get down to the H's. Next slide, please. So, again, different families mean different things, so right now, a married couple, both working with kids, is actually the most stable family type for this community, and under 25 years and single female head of household, single moms, are the most likely to be at risk. So, if you're a single mom, if you're an organization that can target single moms in a certain community, that would be one of the targets you would do here. You would provide supports and workarounds and remove barriers for single moms and kids under 25 years old. My 25-year-old went to high school, graduated on time, got four-year college, graduated on time with a business degree from Western, came out, started working for Stryker, and within a year moved back home because he couldn't afford to live in Grand Haven, just as we downsized. Next slide, please. So, here's the issue. Hudsonville is an amazing place. Ottawa County is an amazing place. It's got a lot of good businesses, it's got a lot of good things going on. Hudsonville is it, right? I mean, it's a great place to be, and so is Ottawa County in Michigan, but if you earn between $12 an hour and $17 an hour, you are likely to struggle anywhere in Ottawa County. We know what's happened to housing, we know what's happened to the price of basic necessities, we know what's happened to the price of childcare. It can be 30 to 40% of your income. So, if you're paying 40% of your income to housing, 30% of your income to childcare so you can go to work, there's not a lot left. Next slide, please. The reason this is important, and we're coming to the end, I want you to go on to unitedforalice.org and get deep into the data, but for tonight, we've just given you a summary. The reason this is important is we're starting to hear from our business owners that their stable, productive workforce is struggling to be a stable, productive workforce. There's a lot of people jumping ship for 25 cents, there's a lot of people not coming back to work, there's a lot of people living so far away from where they work to be able to afford to do it that it's incredibly counterproductive to being able to afford to do it. And I know that this group has worked on transportation, I know you've worked on housing, Patrick and I have worked together on a lot of things at United Way. Thanks for sharing him, I love that, but it's tough, right? We've been working on housing for 15 years, and I wish I had a solution for it. We've been working on regional transportation for longer than that, and I wish we had a better solution for it, but if we want to grow and thrive as a community and as a county and as a state, we have to solve for how to let these families be stable, productive workforce. Next slide, just a couple more. Here's what we're doing about it. We're going a top-down, bottom-up approach. We have a policy platform that talks about childcare, post-secondary attainment, the EITC, getting that back up to historic levels, it's low right now, and Michigan 211 is a way to connect people to the services that we provide, and then the next slide goes bottom-up, that we're working with nonprofits to strengthen capacity to target individuals where we know they're struggling and the type of families that we know that are struggling. We want to provide undesignated dollars. In my United Way, we went from 1.2 million for housing to 2.5 million for housing last year. All federal and state grants, excellent. Not a penny of it allowed to be spent on operating those programs. So, my undesignated dollars said that you had to do twice the amount of work, twice the amount of investment, twice the amount of housing stuff with exactly the same amount of overhead. That's tough to do, and that's happening across the board with all of those funds. The funds are coming through, there's a lot more federal and state money than there used to be, but it's not for operating, it's all designated, so we're trying to help agencies get undesignated money. We're trying to provide unlikely partnerships, collaborations. We can't do it alone, our partners can't do it alone. I'll hazard a guess that you probably can't do it alone, right? We can work together on these things cross-segment. And use that data, use the data that's in this report, in our community assessment, in your health department's assessment, in your own assessments, to target, because there's still not enough money to go around, so let's target those that are struggling the most. And I think the last slide is, let's spend 10 hours on it, even though I only had 10 minutes with you today. Go on to unitedforalice.org, you can do your own studies, you can look at Wi-Fi access by ALIS in Hudsonville, you can look at library access, you can see some transportation overlays, you can look at all of your neighbors and see who may be doing something that we're not. The reason I share ALIS with you is so that you know that we need a strong, vibrant working community, and they are struggling if they earn less than $18 an hour, almost guaranteed. I'd love to take three hours of questions now. I'm a data geek, I could stay here all night, but I see you have a full agenda.
Is that $18 an hour for just a single individual or a family?
Yeah, the reason we come up with the $18 is because people always say, "How much do you need to survive?" And it actually changes per family type. So, that $18 is kind of the average. If you have a double-income family and you're both earning $18, you're going to probably be okay. If you're a single mom and you're earning $18, you're probably not going to be okay. So, it does range between probably 15 for a couple to probably more than 20 for an individual. Unfortunately, we're being pushed into housing that we wouldn't even want to rent normally, but it's the only thing available. Childcare, the same thing. It's the only space I can get in. If I didn't put my name down four years ago, it's five miles that way, and I'm going five miles this way. So, it's an expensive proposition to be a young family in any community. It's not a Hudsonville problem, it's a Michigan problem. Just happens to exist in Hudsonville as well. Great question.
Any other questions or discussion from the dais, or Patrick?
Patrick, on behalf of Hudsonville, keep up the good work. We appreciate your attention to detail. We know we need better transportation system and affordable housing, not low-income housing, but what is called affordable housing for our workforce. And if we don't have that, we're not going to grow as a community. Who's going to change my bedpan, quite frankly? Because having worked years in the factory, it pained me to see our employees drive 20 miles from out in the country in a beat-up vehicle just to get to work in the snow, and we see that routinely in our community now. And everybody's struggling to find the workforce because of it now.
Yeah, we're seeing both sides of it now. Every corporation we go into is saying, "We can't get people."
One of the, you mentioned transportation and housing, which we're working on both of those initiatives in the city, and one of the more recent developments with Ryan and Patrick is working on with Senator Victory is there's legislation on the floor right now that would introduce a tax credit for an employer that contributes money to a local housing project that would go to support workforce housing. It's a 50% tax credit, so if Royal Technologies put in $1 million into this fund, that would help develop a housing project in the city that Royal employees could work at, he would get a $500,000 tax credit. So, there are some things like that because we're trying to make those connections between the employers, saying, "You guys have to be part of the solution on this."
How's the next, which Ryan works at, is he's actually a United Way employee, so it's a United Way partnership. Great. I really appreciate your willingness to listen. Not everybody will, so thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Moving on to, first of all, is anybody else here from the public that chooses to address the Commission? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda items. There are four. Minutes of City Commission Regular Session dated August 10th, Minutes of City Commission Work Session dated August 24th, Minutes of Terrace Square Advisory Board Meeting dated August 11th, and Minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Session dated August 18th. Are there any changes to those minutes or that correspondence? I did identify a couple for the clerk earlier today. Are we good on updating those changes?
Yep.
Very good. Hearing none, I'll call for a voice count. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda items say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Consent Agenda items carries. Moving on to new business, Public Safety. First up is the Chief, and I think, are you speaking for all three, or are you, I mean, every...
You're getting your money, too.
Let me get my billfold, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Yeah, I bring you greetings from a very wet Hughes Park, too.
How was it going?
It was very busy. During the rain, people left, but when it got done, a lot of people returned, so...
You didn't run out of hot dogs, did you?
We have not, so we're going to have some lunch here in the next few days. We all like hot dogs. All right, yeah, my report for you. Pretty average month, again, 50 calls. We're getting back on track a little bit as far as the yearly calls. If you look back to 2019, we're at 354. 2019 happens to be the biggest year we had since we stopped going regularly to the Laurel's. So, we're kind of on track to catch that and maybe pass it, so we're staying busy with that. Any other questions at all?
So, we never, we don't make calls at the Laurel's anymore?
There's only a few reasons we do. Number one, if it's a Class 1, they don't have an AED, so we go for that. If a visitor or an employee gets hurt on the job, we're required to go by them, and then if there's a long delay from life to come in and transport or whatever, then life will call us in. But anything else, like just a transport or somebody being sick and just general stuff, they have a nursing staff, they can take care of that.
Is there a reason they don't have an AED?
Haven't heard one. I suggested it.
They don't have an AED at Laurel's?
No.
That's odd. I just find that...
Yeah, it's a little odd. Any other questions at all?
Any questions or discussion with the Chief?
I loved your report where you capitalized the word brutal because it was a bad week weather-wise, so thank you for your staff and what they did.
You're welcome.
That was a tough week to be out there.
It was.
Yeah.
We had one fire Monday, I was thinking ahead, that brought a couple fans, so that helped, but it was a very brutal week. Normally, you get one or two days like that during fair week, but this was the whole week, and it was nasty. We had probably nine medicals, and they're all heat-related, so, but I guess that's the best of the worst that could have happened.
Well, thank you to your staff for what they did.
Thank you, I will.
Anything else for the Chief? Thank you, keep up the good work, and make sure you thank your team from the Commission.
I will, thanks.
Moving on to the Sheriff's Department. Saying that the sergeant, yeah. Saying the sergeant isn't here. I think we just put up the memo, the monthly reports. I think one item of note is that the new sign, speed sign, has been installed by Sergeant on Van Buren. Have you seen that, Phil?
Yeah.
What's your feedback?
It's working, it's working very well.
Yeah, it even caught me. I was doing 26, and I slammed on the brakes, so...
Yep, it does grab your attention.
So, I think we're getting one more, aren't we?
We already have it, we just have not installed it yet at this point. They're both going to come down in the winter, so they'll both be put up somewhere next spring.
So, they're, we move them around every year, every season?
Yeah, we'll keep them up for a month or so and then move it to another street.
Very good. Was there an emergency management report there, Clerk?
There was. Both of those reports are in.
Just for information.
Are in, both reports on the fair and...
And I didn't hear any comments from any of the citizens on the fair, other than it went well. And it was hot.
Yep. As far as I know.
A lot of good feedback, so... Moving on to item number eight, purchase of hose, valves, and fittings. I will ask for a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve $20,146 for the Fire Department to purchase new five-inch supply hose with new valves and fittings for Engines 1322 and 1341.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. The Chief is still sitting down, so if you have any questions, he's here. Hearing none, I will call for the roll. Clerk?
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Brad Rank?
Yes.
Staggenga?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to item number nine, Traffic Control Order. Is there a motion? Don't be shy, folks. It's for the urban heyday. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve temporary traffic order, control order number 21-08, foreclosure of Central Boulevard between School Avenue and Plaza Avenue, Plaza Avenue between Kelly Street and Harvey Street, Harvey Street between Plaza Avenue and School Street on 10921 for urban heyday.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Clerk, can you pull up the map, please? Is that the same as in years past? It looks like it's bigger this year.
It is bigger, and this was a change that we made this year. Last year, we did not have Plaza closed or Central. We had Harvey Street on the west end closed, and the reason we're doing it is there's always been kind of a disconnect between the Terrace Square area of the event and the Gemmins parking lot where people had to walk along the sidewalk, and so there's two kind of activity zones in urban heyday, and we actually had to put a string up with some pumpkins on it to guide people down the sidewalk. So, the suggestion was made, let's line Plaza Street with all of the vendors, so the vendor booths will connect the two activity areas and make it much better in terms of connectivity. The downside of that is that was the route we used for the hayrides. So, the hayrides are now going to be a bigger route that basically encircle the entire downtown area, so the hayrides are going to be longer. Moms and dads did a longer break. We are a little worried about the lines because with a longer ride, you're going to have longer people waiting for there to get on, but we're going to work through that. So, overall, though, we think it's a good improvement, just requires some different street closures than what we did last year.
How many people were we expecting? Last year, we had, what, 2,000?
Yeah, more than that. I think we had most, close to 5,000 or 6,000 in the downtown through that event, so if things are continuing on the pattern that we've seen with this year's events, we would probably see the...
See that again.
See that again.
The Plaza owners and Gemmins are supportive, and...
They're very supportive, and many of them are sponsors of the event.
Any questions or discussion from the Commission?
That's a great idea.
Yep. Well done, and hats off to your staff, and we're looking forward to it. I hope they end up supporting to staff everything right now, so.
Yeah, and we're gonna have, as I mentioned, Andrea has already got hired. We've got a new events coordinator that's coming on on the 29th, two weeks before this event, so she'll be there to help navigate this as well. But this will be all hands on deck event. This is our biggest city event that we do.
Can the commissioners volunteer? Okay, it's been moved. It has been moved and supported. Any other discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please. Clerk?
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Stegenga?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
LaRara?
Yes.
Redrunk?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Traffic control order carries. Moving on to item number 10, finance. City Treasurer, you're up.
Hi, good evening. Same set of reports, just for a new fiscal year. So we'll start with July. For revenues, I'm comparing the activity for July to the budget revenues for the whole year. So we're at 20% of that. And for expenditures, we're a little bit higher, at 29.85%. The next report will go into the summary. So we brought in $843,506 for the month of July. That was mostly property taxes. Revenue to date comparison, it's not very helpful this month just because it's the same. We only have one month of activity there.
Kayla, any reason why that July was so much higher than past years?
I think people were just anxious to pay their property taxes. I don't, but we actually had a printer deliver them on June 30th, and there were some people coming in on June 30th when our system can't accept them for last fiscal year. So we actually had to turn people away on June 30th because as soon as they got their mail, they came to pay their taxes. So that's the only explanation I have at this point.
Anxious to get out of the house, I guess.
Yeah. So in the revenue summary, like I said, it's about 30% of our budgeted expenditures. And I want to point out, it seems like a high number, but $1,142,332 were actually budgeted transfers that we have in the budget that we just make right away so that the Parks Fund has their money. I did all the transfers except Terrace Square. Terrace Square, we always just kind of wait till the end hoping that, you know, they can generate their own revenue to sustain itself. And then at the end of the year, if they need help, that's when we make that transfer. Okay, and again, the next report is just the expenditure to date, which only has one month, so it's the same figure. Any questions on the revenue and expense report?
Yeah, Kayla, maybe this is a question for you, Greg. When will we bail out Terrace Square financially with federal money?
When have we?
When will we?
So how the, we actually got approval for our ARPA funds. It was the last Friday, I believe, we got the approval notice. And they said, okay, you're gonna get half of your funds within 30 days. So I'm hoping by the end of the month, we at least have half of the ARPA funds. Now, with Terrace Square, how, what we were initially thinking is that we would use the revenue loss portion of the ARPA calculation to help Terrace Square out. How they're telling us we have to calculate it is per government entity overall and not fund-specific. So although Terrace Square was struggling, the general fund did very well. So it's not gonna show a big revenue loss in the community.
It still doesn't mean that we won't, we will still make Terrace Square whole. We're just gonna be making it with general fund money instead of ARPA money. ARPA money still comes into the general, or into the fund that we can spend it. So it's just a different way of calculating it.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to be strategic on how we want to use those funds.
How much is it gonna cost to make them whole? You know?
They lost about $100,000 in revenue that we had to refund for cancellations.
I was thinking it was gonna be 150, so that's actually not as bad.
Yeah, we, well, yeah, and we're having the audit done this week, so I'll know final figures on that hopefully soon. So I don't think it went all the way up to 150 because it's hard to try to calculate that because, of course, you're trying to say, how many weekends did we not book that we could have booked that we didn't actually refund? So, you know, we just have to be strategic on how we plan to use that money and how we make all of our funds whole.
Yep. Very good.
Okay, so the next report's gonna be the investment report for the month of July. The new investment that we had is highlighted in green, and that was invested with First United Credit Union, a rate of 1.24. And that was a $250,000 CD that matured from Lake Michigan Credit Union in June, and we invested it in July. So overall, the average return rate was 1.39%, and we brought in $4,477 in interest for the month. Any questions on that one?
Any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, thank you. We'll move on to payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $528,683.63, and to confirm payment of the bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any questions for the Finance Committee or the Treasurer?
I have a discrepancy in that number. Am I looking at an older agenda? Was that number updated from the? I've got 528,251.80 on my packet that you sent out, Jill.
There was an updated agenda.
It was an updated one?
I might not have opened the right one.
I just want to make sure we got the right amount.
This, the one that's on the screen is the updated one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So was the motion for the one off the screen?
Correct.
Yeah.
So what was, the motion is correct, then?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Clerk?
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
LaRara?
Yes.
Redrunk?
Yes.
Stegenga?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, pay the bills. Moving on to item number 12, ACH Funds Distribution. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $4,865,989.25, which are distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for the Finance Committee or the Treasurer?
I just, I just want to point out, the number's really big compared to our normal amount. So 4.7 million of those disbursements were actually property taxes to all the taxing entities. Because we were usually about 100,000 just for our normal operations. So it's all because of property taxes.
So this is the, basically, the annual distribution of the dividend?
Pretty much, yeah, because this is what, August? That's when property taxes were due. So again, we get a big rush of everyone paying in the due date. So you'll still see tax distributions pretty much throughout the end of the year, but they'll be way smaller than these.
I would think most of that goes out of county and the schools probably.
Uh huh.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk?
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
LaRara?
Yes.
Redrunk?
Yes.
Stegenga?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, make the distributions. Item number 13, Budget Adjustments, 1 through item 35.
Motion to adopt the 2021-2022 Budget Adjustments numbers 1 through 35 as drafted.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Do you want to address any of this at all, or speak to it?
Yeah, we usually don't have budget adjustments the first quarter of the new year. But, and right now, it might seem tedious because it is a lot of small amounts, but I do it just for transparency and so you guys know why we're moving money. But basically, with the new HR administrator, we did have to create a new department so that we could charge things to. And in order to do that, we had to make an adjustment to the budget so that we could move funds that were pretty much originally in the clerk's department that were dual clerk and HR solely to HR so that Andrea will have money to spend accordingly. So pretty much, you'll see that that's what 1 through 31 are. It's just movement of those funds. Other funds are just projects that were approved for last fiscal year that didn't get complete. And so I'm just moving the remaining money that was already budgeted and approved last year that wasn't spent to this year because we're gonna spend it this year. So it's just pretty much cleanup. It's not like we're asking to spend way more money. It was all money that was budgeted that we're just moving around.
And the big one is the construction for Van Buren, that building resurfacing. That was a number 33?
Right, yep. So they didn't really, yeah, it delayed, and it didn't really get started to this year. So we're just moving it, yep.
Any questions for the Treasurer? Hearing none, there's a motion on the table. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
LaRara?
Yes.
Redrunk?
Yes.
Stegenga?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, thank you, Treasurer. Moving on to item number 14, Administration, Appointment of City Clerk. Gruppin. Is there a motion? It's on the personnel committee.
Motion to appoint Jill Gruppin as City Clerk for the city of Hudsonville.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this? This is your last chance, Jill, to maybe.
Last chance to back out?
Change your mind. I don't think you will, will you?
No, I'm good. It's only 14 years later, but it's good.
Any questions or discussion from the commission? Very well, let's have the roll call by the clerk.
Commissioner Stegenga?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
LaRara?
Yes.
Redrunk?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, and I would just note that Jill has already been sworn in. She was sworn in by Diana before.
As the.
Yeah, so there's no, we don't need to do that. We just need to go through this formality of formally appointing her. Does you guys want to swear her in again for ceremonious purposes, but?
I can get the book.
Well, thank you for joining the city of Hudsonville, Jill.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to the long future with you here.
Me, too.
Moving on to item number 15, Recodification of City Codes of Ordinances. Is there a motion? Make sure we read it off the screen, by the way.
Make a motion to authorize the city clerk to begin the recodification of the Code of Ordinances through MUNI code for the total project cost of around $16,175 spread over the current and next fiscal years.
That is the old one. Read the one on the screen, Gary.
The memo.
Okay, motion to authorize the city clerk to begin the recodification of the City Code of Ordinances through MUNI code for a total estimated cost of $12,325.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Patrick, you want to give us a quick update on this, just so we all?
Yeah.
I know there's a memo there.
And Jill, chime in on this. This is a complicated proposal to understand. And the reason it's complicated because we were debating on whether or not we wanted this process to include the current zoning ordinance, which would have been more expensive, or should we just wait since the zoning ordinance is getting updated, and we'll include that as an appendix later? But Jill's memo explains why we're doing this. It hasn't been done in 30 years. Our ordinances need to be looked at to make sure that they're up to date in compliance with state law. Just to make sure that everything is legal.
And the people that do this, they do it for a living?
They're attorneys, and what they're gonna do is they're gonna go through a legal review, and they're gonna say, this, 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 all needs to change. That goes to our attorney, and our attorney will say, yep, we agree with that. And then they'll go through and go ahead and make the changes. And once everything's done, it gets reformatted and redocumented, and we all have new code that goes on the website. But Jill's memo had kind of the breakout of the fees. The first is that legal review, then we go over that with our attorney. Then they go through phase two, which is implementation and republication, which is basically making those changes. Then we added the gender neutralization of code. If you read the City Code of Ordinances under Jill's, under City Clerk, it's all he. He signs it, he will do this, he will do that. So that should be gender neutral, and that's littered throughout the entire Code of Ordinances. So that's the basis for it. It is about a year process from when they start. So this will span two fiscal years. We'll approve the first part. We're approving the full amount. But what we don't know yet is when the zoning ordinance is done, we're gonna come back and have that done. That'll be done on a per-page basis. I think it's 18 something.
1824.
1824 per page. So there'll be another fairly large fee to insert the new zoning ordinance into the code.
Although that's better than the $20 per extra page for the actual code, so.
Yes. But again, it hadn't been done in over 30 years, so well overdue.
Well, I think it's good, we, good thing we're moving forward to this and clean up ourselves. I was surprised there's never was an issue with readiness.
Redevelopment ready.
Redevelopment ready.
And for some reason, it's not a.
Part of it, yeah. Any other questions for Patrick or the city clerk? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Redrunk?
Yes.
Stegenga?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
LaRara?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, thank you, City Clerk and Patrick. Moving on to Department of Public Works. Item 16, Replacement of the City Hall Vehicle. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $27,000 on a Chrysler minivan comparable as approved by the city manager to replace the city's current 2010 Dodge Caravan.
Supported.
It's been moved and supported. This has been a topic of discussion for a couple of years at least, Patrick. I can't imagine anybody has any other questions or discussion on it.
I just don't, I don't have any major discussion other than I don't know where they're gonna find something for $27,000 that's any.
If they can even find a vehicle, yeah.
I just was at Harold Ziegler the other day, and they had a 2018 Pacific with 43,000 miles, and they wanted $39,000.
Yeah. We have done, we budgeted $22,000 for the vehicle. Our plan was to buy the Chrysler Voyager, which is the new version of the Town and Country. It's their base model entry-level van. Same design as the Pacifica, but just an entry level. And that was, we could buy that through my deal, new at $22,000. The problem is, you can't get it right now because of the whole chip thing. So Bob and I started talking and said, well, what if we look for a nice used vehicle, which the Pacifica can't, or the Voyager can't be found new or used because it's brand-new? up you go on options, you're gonna be pushing that 30,000. So we're gonna be looking for a, a nice base level Pacifica with low miles, which is how we bought the 2010 Caravan.
So we should get a good price on the 2010 and we turn it in?
We hope so. I, I really don't know. I know that that van is running on its last legs, there's lots of issues. It's, it's long overdue of replacement. But we didn't do it last year because of COVID, and we didn't know what the budget implications were gonna be. So we, we held it off another year.
Do we have any stipulations as to what model, year, mileage that we want to have a look below or above?
I think we're gonna try to find the newest model with the lowest mileage in that price range. That's our goal. And the ones we are looking at were 18s and 19s that we were finding with 30, 40,000 miles on.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Gary. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Raderink?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Stegenga?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Buy a new van.
And I forgot to mention, the reason we're doing this way is because when we find one, by the time we came to the Commission to ask if we could buy it, it'd be gone.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna get the approval so that we can act on it right away.
Before I ask to go across the dais, I have a couple of notes here. MML Conference, who now is attending? That would be the, what, 23rd, 24th, and 25th, next?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Friday morning is just final session.
I plan on going.
Tobin?
Yep.
Bill?
Yep.
Larry is going. Dan is no. Gary? So I guess it's Tobin, Phil, and Mark, and Patrick, and Larry.
No, I'm not.
No, you're not going?
I'm just going to the fleece.
I'm just going to the fleece, which is the Wednesday night?
Correct.
So Patrick, who, who, who else is going to the fleece and vanderbrake on Wednesday?
I'm not.
So 1, 2, 3, 4, would you make sure they know who's attending, Patrick?
Yes, I am not attending that either. I have another event that night. So.
So there'll be the 1, 2, 3, 4 of us with ours.
I've already taken care of it.
You've already taken care of all that? Okay.
Thank you, Jill.
And then as for the attendance, I assume we'll be meeting here and driving the old van?
City van, if you want to.
I might just meet Jill there.
We want you to get there.
Yeah, or we just, it's in.
Grand Rapids, downtown, right?
Might make it to Granville.
Where is it?
It's in Grand Rapids, right?
Yeah.
Downtown. Yeah. That's what I'm saying. The van might make it to Granville.
Wow, you, you really.
It's bad. There's a lot of lights on.
Okay, well, somebody's gonna drive. I want to figure out who's gonna drive then, so.
We'll send out a communication prior and to see where.
Yeah, I'll probably just be here in the morning. And if anybody wants to ride it with me, then they can ride it with me. Parking, we'll have to just expense, right?
Yeah, maybe we'll have.
We'll figure something out.
Okay, maybe we'll have a new vehicle by then, things go on. We'll see.
Second item is, the clerk is asking for the commissioners to keep track of their own attendance. So you get paid for all your meetings. There's no question. She has provided you the three sheets, one for each month. This will be the routine, and at the end of every quarter, she'll provide you the three sheets, and you can fill these out and put them in your mailbox no later than what day?
The Friday before we get paid?
The Friday before we get paid. And if you don't, then guess what? You're not gonna get probably paid.
And Jill, to clarify, this is only for the meetings that we have that you're not a part of, correct?
Correct. Because I'll have that year at this meeting.
Okay.
So.
And if you go to a work sess, a conference, that's also.
Yes.
Needs to be recorded as such.
That's a good point.
As mentioned earlier, there will be a work session two weeks from tonight to discuss developing criteria for appointment of a city commissioner in the absence of Greg. This week, the auditors will be here for the financial audit. So if you come to City Hall, you'll see the city treasurer busy gathering up papers and, and providing numbers. If you have any concerns or questions about the city's budget or the finances, please approach the auditors and express your concerns. We by law are required to identify our concerns with the auditors and they can, so they can attempt to resolve them. The Park Bench in Hughes Park, we'll be going in.
It's in.
It is in?
Mm-hmm.
So at some point, Patrick, can you arrange for us to maybe go over there, get a picture taken?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Get ready for the work session.
We could do it right before the next work session.
So plan to do it before the next work session. We'll have that, how about we meet in the park at 6:30?
Yeah.
Is it still light?
You know what? Maybe we just have the work session at the park. Maybe we could do it at the Commons Building.
That's fine.
We'll do that.
So did you want to meet at this, at the park, Hughes Park, at 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
What day are we talking?
Two weeks from tonight.
Today.
It's the 28th, I believe.
Fourth, Tuesday of the month. I'll have to check to make sure that Commons Building is available.
Okay. Will you follow up on that, Patrick? And then I had one other item here I wanted to just mention briefly. An item that came up in the planning commission on one of our developments was on these single-story no-step homes. If there is a tornado warning in the city, do people know that they can evacuate to city buildings? And who, and how will those city buildings be opened and advertised?
Well, we have City Hall and Terror Square, I believe, are both identified as storm shelters for the community. You're asking how we would notify people of that in the?
Yeah, I mean, do people even know that? I mean, is that something public?
It's, it's been publicized. It probably could be publicized again. We can do that in, in the newsletter, if you'd like, or put that out on Facebook.
Oh, Chief, I'd like to hear from you on that.
Is there any Mayor Northrup's sign on the building?
What's that?
Who's gonna open the buildings up?
I assume the Sheriff's Department opens the buildings, right?
If we had a, an event like that, that would be something that would activate the EOC, or the EOC would be involved. I would, I would think that we would make sure that those.
I was hoping Dave would be here and we could ask him.
I mean, we had, we had the Terror Square open for cooling shelter just within the last, during the fair week. So that was done at the request of Ottawa County, and we staffed that with somebody there. So in those cases that are extreme weather conditions, we'll, we'll make that available to the community and publicize that.
Okay. We might want to think about some of the newsletter, maybe, or I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, question, question about that. Terror Square doesn't really have much of a basement, does it?
It does have a basement.
Under the showroom.
Underneath the front portion, underneath the workspace area. And, and it is a tornado shelter. There's a emergency.
That's what I was talking about, in case there were a tornado situation.
Yeah. We have an emergency key right outside the door there, break glass in case of emergency. We've got one downstairs in the firing range.
I think maybe Dave Dahl should be in on this, but he could also put a crawl underneath the TV when there's such an issue, and we could state there what buildings are open for people to evacuate. You know, the same question has come up to, for people in presidential states, where do they go?
And does high school?
Um, might, might not, but I don't.
That's a question for Dave, and he's not here, so I was gonna.
Yeah, I'm not sure they have really good tornado facilities either. They might have basements, but I don't know if it's.
That's something we should need to resolve with Dave when we get a chance. Yeah, I mean, in those cases where there's an imminent threat, you know, we're under a tornado warning and something's bearing down on the city, there's, nowadays, we have a little more time to get that messaging out and warn the community. But in situations where it's happening, most people are advised to stay in place and seek cover and shelter to the greatest extent they can. But let us talk, we have a safety committee actually next week, so we can bring that up and discuss that there.
In the past, we had signage that designates buildings.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know that, I think we talked about there being signage. I know there's a sign in Terror Square. I don't know where it is, though.
Okay, just as an item to look into when you get a chance.
Sure.
Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, we'll go down the dais. Tobin?
I have one follow-up question for Jill, from a finance committee perspective. Do I need to make note of that on the sheet anytime there's emails regarding the budgets?
I don't, I was gonna say, Larry said that you do it twice.
I think we get compensated twice, even though we may get two or three a week or several a month. There's just a maximum of two per month that are compensated, if I recall.
Do we need to notify you of that, or is that?
No, I'll just, I'll make a note of it.
Okay.
Right here.
I have one other comment in regards to the vehicle. If it's not white, can it not be blue?
Should be green instead, right? I don't think it'll be green or blue. So it's harder to find those colors anyway, so yes, noted.
Thank you.
Thank Mary Carey.
Greg?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Nice to see you tonight. Bill?
Just something, Chief, you had the item on there tonight about hoses and stuff. I just appreciate the way you put together your memos. On your memo, it tells you where it's budgeted from, why we need to do this, and why we need to do this now. And I appreciate what you do and your background you give us. So thank you.
Nothing from me. So we got, how many retired guys up here now?
And one unemployed.
One unemployed.
Nothing new to add.
Very well. City Clerk and Treasurer? Anything to add? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All of us, a favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.